Good evening. Welcome to the Town Council Budget Work Session. This is number one. The date is Monday, March 5th, and the time is 6:35. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's budget presentation is going to be on the topic of the Budget Message, and then we will be covering Accounts 0110 through 0740, as well as the Public Library Services Account 1210. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Alfred.
Okay, the first announcement I'd like to make is that we have three Budget Sessions that are scheduled for this week, tonight, Tuesday night, and Wednesday night. The March 7th session needs to be rescheduled. The council is available at this point to change that date from March 7th to March 15th. That will be Thursday, March 15th, for that Budget Session that was scheduled for March 7th. The reason for that change is a family emergency that I won't be available on the 7th to be able to present on the budget, and the council has graciously agreed to revise that schedule to March 15th. And starting tonight, for those folks that are viewing through the computer, the entire budget document is available by link at the website itself, so that they can follow along with each of the detailed items that we reviewed tonight, as well as each of the other Budget Sessions. And starting, I'd like to go over the Budget Message with the council, and I'll start on page one of the message. The municipal budget is made up of eight different funds. General, School Fund, the three utilities, water, wastewater, and solid waste, as well as special revenue funds for the Peastale Office Building, Neighborhood Guild, and the Senior Services Program. The general fund for the 2012-2013 year is proposed in the amount of $73,328,912. This is a decrease of $43,138 from the amount that was appropriated in the 2011-2012 year. We're also looking at reductions in the School Fund of approximately $184,000, and reductions in the Solid Waste Fund of $35,000, and Neighborhood Guild of approximately $1,000. Overall, with the eight programs, less the inter-fund transfers, the 2012-2013 year budget is proposed to be a $323,622 reduction from the funding levels approved for the current year, the 2011-2012 year. Moving on to page two. Page two provides a line item detail of the general fund. The general fund operations are up approximately 1.77 percent, or $351,000. Debt service is about a $5,100 increase, and the capital budget that's been approved by the Town Council is down $29,000. We are looking at increasing the transfer to the School Fund in the amount of $147,823, or .31 percent. The school-related debt will be down $518,000. That $518 is an expenditure reduction. Its impact on property taxes is $430,000. The reason that that occurs is that there are less third-party revenues that are offsetting what the debt service requirements are. So while we're showing a $518,000 decrease there, as far as the tax burden impact, it would be about $431,000. Overall, the municipal program's up 1.5 percent, while the school program will be showing a reduction of $370,000. Obviously, the $370 is because there's a $518,000 decrease in the debt associated with school programs. On the revenue side, what we're looking at is increasing the property tax levy by approximately For the most part, all other revenues are either stable or decreasing. The decline that's major here is in two line items. One is in local revenues. We're anticipating about $185,000 less in revenue from local revenue sources than we were in the adopted budget for the 1112 year. Principal reason for that, we'll go through as we go through the revenue statement itself, but the principal reason is the reduction in investment income that's anticipated. Also, for the 2012-2013 year, we are recommending a reduction in the level of undesignedated fund balance to be committed to the 1213 year, down to $1 million, or a $200,000 reduction. Overall, non-property tax revenues will be down about $333,000, or almost 4 percent from what they were in the current budget. And we'll go into this into detail. Moving on, as far as the property tax, on page three, the property tax rate is estimated to remain constant at $14.51. I caution that there are still several changes that will occur until the roll is certified on June 15th. We have taken a very minimal increase in anticipated roll growth. We are still waiting to get tangible values from some of our larger industrial and commercial concerns. We are anticipating another decline of approximately $17 million in that portion of the roll. Should that not occur, the roll increase would be larger, and in fact, there could in fact be a reduction in the rate from below, to below the $14.51. We're presenting, as we normally do, a conservative estimate at this time. The adjustments will have to be made, both in looking at the motor vehicle roll, as well as the real estate roll, as we go forward. But even with the conservative estimations that are presented here this evening, we're anticipating that we should be able to see no increase in the real estate rate for the 2012-2013 year, with one qualification. And we'll talk about this in some detail, is the impact of any changes that may occur at the General Assembly level related to the motor vehicle tax, and the manner in which the assessment values are determined on that. If we move forward to page M4, M4 provides a tax distribution breakdown. Again, what we're looking at is the transfer to the School Fund will be down 2 cents from what it was in the current year, and the debt service will be down 10 cents. So effectively, there's a 12-cent reduction on the impact associated with the overall tax rate. We're also expecting a 12-cent increase on the municipal side that nets to zero. When we look at the last five years' history on the property tax levy, property tax levy, even though the '08-'09 year was up 5 percent, over the last five years, we've seen an effective five-year average of about 1.88 percent in terms of growth. So during the economic difficulties that the country, as well as the state, has experienced, we have attempted, in the municipal budget process, to be able to minimize additional property tax increases in terms of managing our municipal program. We also detail on a yearly basis what the maximum property tax levy is. At the bottom of page four is a chart that shows that were the town to increase based on the maximum levy increase, it would be a 4 percent increase. Obviously, the 4 percent increase is opposed to the .4 percent increase that we're actually looking at in terms of new property tax levy. Essentially, we could have raised about $2.35 million more in property taxes and stayed in line with the municipal tax cap. So the tax cap, again, for the fourth year in a row, has not come into play in the development of the municipal program for our community. Moving on to page five. Page five looks at the increase in the property tax levy, and breaks it out by functional area of municipal program, the school program. And what you can see is that the municipal share of the property taxes that are raised on the top of the page shows that in the current year, 22.8 percent of the property taxes raised went for municipal purposes. That will increase to 23.6 percent, and there'll be a corresponding decrease on the school portion, going from 77 percent down to 76 percent. When we look at the tax roll, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, we are looking at a minimal increase of about $7.3 million. During the current year, the increase was $10.1 million. Tracking of the roll increases to date show us running parallel to where we were last year, so the 7.3 is still a very conservative number. Obviously, until we get a better handle on what the tangible property values will be, and that reporting isn't until the 15th of March that it's required from the large business concerns, we're anticipating a $17 million decrease there, yet on the taxable real estate, about a 24, so it nets to the 7 million. The exemptions, we're assuming, will stay relatively constant, and overall, the property tax growth will be, on the roll increase, would be about a .17, as opposed to the .23 in the current year. Motor vehicles, based on the preliminary information that's been provided by the state, we're estimating that the motor vehicle roll would be up about $10 million over where it was in the current year. That also presupposes that we would stay with a $3,000 exemption per motor vehicle, which was what was used in the current year. So in parallel, the roll at the $169,817,000 in the 1112 year, as opposed to the 1213 year, is about a $10 million increase that's anticipated. Again, it's early in the budget development season, as far as the tax roll's concerned, have hard numbers. Overall, we'd be looking at about a $17.5 million increase. Motor vehicles are assessed at, with the $3,000 exemption, or maximum per vehicle, same as current year, and the rate has to remain at the $18.71 rate. Moving on to M6, the motor vehicle excise. The thing that's important here is to recognize what has occurred over the last few years. Up through 2010, the state provided a $6,000 reimbursement per vehicle, and based on that, they would reimburse the town. The reimbursement rate, and I think it's an important factor here, is that in the 2010 year, we received from the state $2,178,000. That's down this year to $168,000. So you can see the profound impact it's had on the municipal program in South Kingstown, and many communities have had real difficulties being able to accommodate that type of loss in terms of being able to maintain their budgetary program. I've pointed out on page six and point seven that there is currently three different bills that have been introduced in this session of the General Assembly that would amend the assessment practices associated with motor vehicles. Under the current statute, the vehicles are assessed based on their retail price. The bills that have been submitted would look to have that changed to an average trade-in value. Were that to occur, that could potentially mean as much as a 20 percent reduction in the motor vehicle value. On page M7, I've estimated to you, if we started with a $180 million value and lost 20 percent of it, we would lose $36 million in taxable value. At the $18.71 rate, it would mean that we'd be generating $673,000 less in motor vehicle taxes, which would then shift to the real estate role. If that were to occur, it would mean that the rate increase on the real estate, while now forecasted zero, could increase by 16 percent. I caution that the 20 percent is a very conservative estimate. I also caution that some of the discussion has been that if the legislation were to be enacted during the 2012 session, that it may be deadlined for an effective start date for the 2013-14 year, because this is probably one of those bills that will stay active through budget adoption for most communities. So we can't be sure that there won't be change in the 1213 year. We're giving you a worst-case scenario if we were to lose 20 percent of the motor vehicle value, what the potential impact would be in terms of lost motor vehicle income, and we're showing, if that were transferred into the real estate role, what the implication would be. Moving on--
Excuse me, Steve. Jim has a question.
Steve, the $10 million forecast, does that trade in? Are we buying new automobiles? Is the number of new cars, or has that been kind of an average over the years?
For the most part, it would be dealing with older motor vehicles, Jim, because the younger the vehicle is, the closer that the trade-in value is going to be to retail. So what we've seen is that on some of the preliminary estimates was that the increase could be between 25 and 30 percent on the older vehicles. So again, being conservative, I'm showing it, it may only be a 10 percent were enacted, but we won't know until we see revised numbers from the state. The state has submitted the motor vehicle values to us based on the current statute. If they changed the statute, they would then have to give us all-new numbers, which would then slow down our process considerably in terms of being able to get, you know, a real handle on what that roll value was going to be.
So what'll we do about personnel? I mean, are we just going to be working overtime in June to try to figure this out?
Well, I think a lot of it is going to depend on where the General Assembly ends. As I say, I think, Jim, that if this thing goes into May or June, that they most likely would have it so that it would impact a future year, so the proper budgetary planning could be done. If they don't, I'm sure there's a couple of more hours that Gene can find to deal with the issue.
Thank you.
The property tax levy also has four different adjustments on it. We talk about this each year. If we levy a tax, and we're not going to collect all of that tax in one year, we need to have what's called an overlay. We forecast an overlay at 1.4 percent of what the overall tax levy is. So 1.4 percent would mean that we increase what the levy is by $912,000 in the 2012-2013 year. That's about equal to what it was in the current year, because there's really not much change in the real estate levy value. Second, we'll maintain a tax reserve of $100,000 for erroneous assessments. This is anything that will go through the Assessment Board of Review. Vehicles that are on the roll that are found to have either been transferred or deadlined, that would need to come off the roll. These are the abatements that you make on a meeting-to-meeting basis. The third is a $340,000 reserve on the elderly property tax abatement program. I think, as the council's aware, we actually keep all of the value of the elderly property on the tax roll, so we need to then provide them with a tax credit we have to accommodate for that loss. The fourth is a positive factor, and that's the amount of proration that occurs. Proration is any construction that occurs during the calendar year. In this case, for the 1213 year, it would be that which occurs during the last calendar year of 2011, is additional, I'm sorry, for 2012, calendar 2012, would be added to the tax roll as we go forward. So if somebody had started construction in January of 2012 and finished the construction on July 1st, we would then have a prorated bill, which would be 50 percent of what the year would be, they would be responsible for the taxes. In the current year, that's amounted to about $100,000. We're forecasting an increase from $85,000 to $90,000 that we anticipate receiving through proration for the 1213 year. The chart at the bottom of page seven shows the four components of the overlay, the erroneous assessments, the elderly, as well as the proration value. So you can see, for the 2012-2013 year, the property tax to be collected, or the tax levy would be $66.4 million, up from $66.1 million. Again, that $290,000 increase for the 1213 year. Moving on with the revenue statement, if there's no questions. Prior year taxes and interest, that's anticipated. We're looking at prior year taxes will generate about $525,000. Now, prior year taxes is the reason that we have the overlay, because we're collecting those taxes, but in the second or third, normally in the second or third year, from the time that the tax is actually levied. We're also collecting during that time delinquent tax payments. The interest penalty is estimated at $300,000 for the 1213 year. I also note that while the interest penalty is at 12 percent, the town, through the council resolutions, with the adoption of the budget, on an annual basis, provides 10 business days, interest-free, for each of the four-quarter payments that are due from the taxpayer. Payments in lieu of tax or pilot income comes from six different sources. South County Hospital, based on a 1998 legislative action, General Assembly approved a 30-year program for the town being reimbursed for retail space that was developed with the Medical Arts Building on the hospital campus. That is anticipated to generate about $162,000. South Kingstown Housing Authority, if they turn a net gain over expenses, provides a contribution to the town. It's normally in the $4,000 to $5,000 range. We're anticipating $4,700 in the 12-year, which is up a little from what it was estimated to come in at in 1112, yet the 1112 is a little bit below what was anticipated at the $5,000. Camp Jury, the Land Trust, and Welcome House are all based on tax treaties that have been developed, I believe, since 2003. The La Casa is a provision where, that's federal housing, and 8 percent of the income generated from that facility is then made as a payment in lieu of taxes under the federal program to the host community, and that's anticipated to stay around the $35,000 range. One last pilot payment that comes in is through the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Trust and Pond. That has continued to decline over the years. We're expecting probably in the area of $15,000, which is what we're collecting in the current year from that source. Other transfers, and I think the council's well familiar with these, the top four deal with debt service. Education, fair share fees pays down the debt service on schools. Recreation, fair share on recreation municipal debt, and the open space on the land acquisition debt. And the South Road School Reserve Fund contributes an amount equal to the 30 percent that we're not getting from the state government to continue to service the debt that's associated with that closed building. Water, wastewater, solid waste, those funds use services provided through the general fund, so those are reimbursements for the administrative overhead necessary to run those programs. The same with the senior program, Neighborhood Guild, and Peastale Office Building. The next area that we want to look at is the transfer from the School Fund. The transfer from the School Fund is based on, again, services provided by the town for the school department. The crossing guards, they're budgeted in the police budget, yet they are in expense of the school department. They reimburse the general fund for the cost of providing the crossing guards. They also provide payment on the payroll and accounting services that finance provides, and they also are providing reimbursement to us on services that Parks and Recreation provide for Hazard Field and the Curtis Corner Footfall Facility. There's also two other charges. One is for the energy savings program. This was bonding that was done for, I believe it was a five-year term, and the energy savings that were to result from the energy improvements are used to pay down the debt associated with those improvements. Fire alarm also provides equipment, or most of it is equipment replacement within the school buildings through the Communications Department, and they reimburse not the cost of the service, but rather the cost of any of the equipment that we may need to use in our school facilities. Moving on to the state revenues, we're anticipating for the 1213 about a $45,000 increase in the state aid to the general fund. The increases, for the most part, are related to the public service corporation tax coming in at $344,000 in the current year. We're anticipating that that will remain constant in 1213. We're also seeing projected increases in the meals tax of about $20,000, and the hotel tax of $3,000. The school housing aid is down, but the reason it's down is because, obviously, the debt, there's one, two major debt issues that were retired in the current year. So obviously, if we're paying less in debt, there's less of the 30 percent aid reimbursement coming. Motor vehicle phase-out, we've kept that at the dollar amount that we expect to get in the 1112 year at the $172,000. That's up about $12,000 over what was budgeted. Library construction aid, again, is a reimbursement by the state on some very old library bonds at this point, and that's declining, has been declining each year, and so too is the debt service payments. We are also anticipating about a $4,600 reduction in the library endowments, general library aid, and the endowment funds that would come through. aid and the endowment funds that would come through the state. So the overall state aid to the general fund would be about $2.4 million, or about $45,000, $46,000 over where we were in the current year. Page 10 provides some delineation as to the aid programs. Again, we continue to note the general revenue sharing program, which provided over $1 million in the 910 years at zero. Also, that the, you know, the payment in lieu of taxes is down from 27% down to 19%. And, you know, with the library aid down, as I mentioned, about $4,600. Public service corporation tax has increased. The meals tax, as I mentioned, $20,000. The hotel tax, I want to make sure people are clear, the state levies a 6% surcharge on the hotel space. Of that, the town receives effectively 2%, or 1/3 of the overall cost. The other 4% is detailed in the narrative as to where it goes. As I said, 33.3% goes to the host community, 39.2% goes to the tourism, Regional Tourism Council, 5% goes to Washington, Roger Williams Reserve Fund, and the remaining 22% goes to the state EDC to be used for tourism promotion. So, we're expecting about a $3,000 increase based on the tracking for the first six months of this year, as when we look at what the overall amount was for the 1112 year, and also, I think we're up about $5,000 for the first six months over where we were last year, same time on December 31st. I've talked about the school construction aid and the motor vehicle phase-out. Again, motor vehicle phase-out, we're assuming that the state will say at the $500 vehicle value credit for the 1213 year, and if they do, we're expecting about the $172,000 in reimbursement. Again, down from almost $1.2 million two years ago. Library construction aid, we've already hit. When we look at the local program-generated revenues on page 11, as I mentioned earlier, we're seeing a projected decline of about $186,000 from what the current year budget was. The major reasons for that is in the six revenues that I've highlighted on page 11, first being non-business licenses and fees. You can see the chart below, the department revenue chart, shows you where the non-business license fees come from. We're anticipating about a $25,000 reduction in recording fees from what had been budgeted. It's right on course with what we're expecting to get at $277,000. For the most part, the other revenues that are there are relative, are for the most part, flat. So, we're seeing a decline of about $25,000, going from $360 budgeted down to $335,000. Rental of town property is also down, the rental of the town property is down about $61,000. The major reason for that is that during the current year, we had a contract with Cox Communication. They terminated three cell tower attachment agreements because they decided to go out of the business of wireless. When they did that, we lost the three contracts. The contracts were worth about $80,000. We're seeing increases in each of the other contracts that are out there for the attachment agreements. We're also seeing the increases from the properties at Marina Park. And if you look at M12, M12 shows you where the losses are for the cell tower at about $67,000 net. And the other increases are just marginal increases that we're expecting based on existing contracts that we have with tenants at Marina Park. The South County Hospital here is, they rent property from the town for parking purposes. This has nothing to do with the Medical Arts Building. Investment income is also, as I mentioned earlier, a major concern. We have downgraded the estimate from $140,000, or $140,000 less. We were at a $240,000 projection for the current year. We're anticipating that that will be more like $100,000. Investment earnings at this point are, I'll let Alan tell us, about, I think, 0.2%.
Yeah, really, the difference here, the cash flow is pretty much the same as far as what we're investing. But to give you an idea, through the first six months of last year, we were getting 67 basis points as far as an interest rate on the short-term, you know, 90 to 180 days. And since July 1st, that's been 25 basis points. So we've seen a 63% reduction in the interest rate that we're earning. So, again, based on the same cash flow, it's going to be probably slightly less than $100,000 that we'll see in the current year. And obviously, based on what the Fed position has been recently, that they're not going to raise rates for a while, I would anticipate that that will carry over into the 1213 year.
And as you can see from the chart on page M12, during the time when investment yields were in the 5% range, we were generating in excess of $1.4 million from this revenue source, which is now down to $100,000. So when you look at the restructuring of our revenue stream, dealing with the motor vehicle reimbursement loss of over $1 million, dealing with a loss here of over $1 million, and general revenue sharing of $1 million. We've been very fortunate to be able to make the adjustments necessary to minimize what the impact would be in terms of debt loading onto the tax rate. And a good portion of that is related to the management of the debt service that we have had over the past several years, with us reducing what the debt level projections had been, not selling new debt issues, and also refinancing existing debt issues to be able to reduce debt service cost. So, we have made sizable adjustments as a way of minimizing the loss of those revenues, which are considerable as a component of the overall budget. Other revenues that we're seeing change in, we're forecasting that the police department revenues will be up about $22,000 over what was budgeted in the 1112 year. And you can see, we've had a very large increase in the 1112 year on what's estimated to come in from the motor vehicles rental, police vehicle rentals. A lot of this is tied up with the state construction projects that have occurred, particularly the Route 1 Improvement Project, and we had increased the value of the rental cost on those vehicles for the current year. We're expecting that we'll top out at about $85,000 on the motor vehicle, police vehicle rentals from third-party sources, and this would be any of the construction companies that need security and traffic control during the course of the fiscal year. We're also anticipating a marginal increase in the traffic tribunal values of what will come into the general fund. Miscellaneous revenues, those are from the copy machines, tax liens, tax sales, right-of-way permits. We're expecting that income down about $15,000 from where it was in the current year. Why? Because there's really still less traffic going through the town in all of those different Recreation program income, we're forecasting about a $31,000 increase in revenue. But again, whenever you look at your recreation programs' income, you have to look at the expenditures as well. The expenditures will be up as well. While you're raising $31,000 more in revenue, your net gain as far as tax burden fall-off is only $5,000. So essentially, what you're seeing is about a $25,000 increase in the cost of your programs to provide the programs. The reason why your revenues are up is because we're looking at the potential of new programs. If those programs don't materialize, the expense won't be there, and neither will the revenues. So, most of those programs are at a balanced self-support level, and when we review that budget in detail, we'll go into more explanation as to how that works. But, when you look purely at the revenue side, it's up about $31,000. But, again, I caution that the expenses will also show about a $25,000 increase. The last section is the undesignated fund balance. For the 2012-13 year, we're posing use of $1 million from the undesignated fund balance. And Alan has cautioned me that, based on the new accounting standards, we no longer have an undesignated fund balance, we now have a committed balance. So...
I see general fund is determined...
Unassigned?
All of this is committed.
We've got more phraseology changes when it comes to these bean counters than you can shake a stick at. What we're looking at is that the reduction is really for two purposes. One is to provide us with the ability to adjust upward if we end up with problems with the motor vehicle as a means of not having to deal with any major loading onto the real estate roll. And the second is to reduce the impact on the uncommitted balance that we have, because what we're looking to do is to be able to maintain fund balance target, based on what the council's adopted last June, was between 10 and 16.6%. As you can see from the chart on page 14, we are now looking at about the balance as of the 1011 year, which the last audited year was 12.76%. We're assuming that even with $1 million, we'll be down to about 12.4% by the end of the 1213 year. Our objective would be to wean the general fund off of that money, if at all possible, and to be able to maintain that balance in the 12% to 13% range. It's interesting to note that five years ago, we were up at 13.9%. So there's been a continued erosion with us dealing at the $1.2 million level, and what we would like to do is to stabilize it. If we have problems with the motor vehicle in terms of the tax issues, we'll have some flexibility as making an adjustment on that million if necessary. With that, if there's no questions, we can move on to the page 16, and page 16 looks at the general fund expenditure statement. The expenditure statement is no different than it has been in past years. We break it out into the operating program, the capital budget, debt service payments, the utilities funds, the transfers to the senior services, and the school funds. So, if we start out, the first chart on page 16 shows where we see the expenses increasing on both the operating program and the overall municipal program. As you can see, the major increases are in the public safety area and in general administration costs. We're also looking at a reduction in the library. We are not reducing service levels in the library. During the current year, there was a planned retirement, and there was severance pay that was budgeted in that account that represents, that was higher than what the $26,000 reduction is. That's showing for the 1213 year. Employment services, which includes all of the employee benefits, as well as retirement costs, is up $133,000. I think 100 of that is directly related to the changes in the pension system and what the employer contributions will be for the 1213 year. As noted, debt service programming will be down $513,000, cap bud down 29, and the school fund transfer will be up $147,000, or 0.3%. As you recall, when we did the pro forma, we had used a benchmark of a 2% increase, which is around $780,000. Where we're ending up in terms of the recommended budget after review of the school budget is at the $147,000 level. Overall, general fund will be down $43,000 from what was appropriated in current year. When we look at the general fund operating program, as noted, it's up about 1.8%, or $133,000 of that increase is directly associated with the employer, cost associated with retirement, social security, and healthcare premiums. As we move forward, the personnel program is not increasing. We're looking at a staffing that is still 11.8 positions less than what it was a few years ago. We have not added back any of those positions. We are still looking at the need to manage, to manage a employee program that deals with five different labor groups. The police IBPO with 52 sworn members, EMS with 14 paramedics, and two cardiacists, or 16 people in that unit, as well as approximately 46, I think, on public works, and general municipal employees of about 49. And outside of that, there's another 43 employees that are not within any bargaining unit that reflect the management and supervisory personnel, as well as staff levels at both the library and the senior program. When we look at the general fund personnel program on page 18, we're looking at the cost increase of the personnel program going up 1.6%, or $170,000 over what the current year is. Overall, of our $20 million budget, $10.8 million will be tied up in direct personnel services. This does not include the benefits. We're looking, in terms of full-time salaries, will be up. We are looking at about a 1.2% increase in the cost of service for full-time personnel. And we are also seeing a reduction of 1.1 position. That one position was really a restructuring in the prior fiscal year within the library program where a full-time position was vacated and the hours were, there was reassignment done of duties and responsibilities. So we're looking at 166.95 full-time equivalents within the general fund with an average salary of $53,145, or $108,000 in increase of 1.2%. We're seeing a major increase in the cost of seasonal, and that's directly associated with the canvassing authority for us having to conduct two elections this year. So what we're looking at is $29,991, where I think the normal cost is around $4,000. So you can see that under the 103 account there for the seasonals. So that's where we're seeing the $35,000, or 9.2% in the seasonals. Overtime is up principally because of increased costs associated with the police department. That's up about, I believe, about $85,000 or $100,000. But that also is because we are going to be starting off fiscal year short by two positions, that those will be going through the academy. So we'll be seeing reduced cost on full-time salaries, but increased cost as far as being able to maintain service levels. We're also anticipating a 3.1% increase in the value of longevity. Longevity, we're not forecasting any changes in the longevity schedules that are contained in the budget document today. If we move on to M19, M19 provides really a summary statement of not just the personnel cost, but also the employment benefits cost. What we're looking at is overall personnel and benefits would be about $13.9 million, which would equate to about 68.9% of the overall municipal operating program. That... That looks only at the costs associated with the full-time personnel for the retirement cost, as well as for the health and dental. The health and dental is listed there at one million nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Again, that doesn't include the monies that go into OPEB, and it doesn't include the monies that go into, actually into OPEB, which is two components, for existing retirees, as well as the future cost as people accrue additional time with the town. And we'll see that in a future chart in this message. So, overall, the entire personnel and benefits program is forecasting about a one point seven percent increase, or increase as a component of the operating budget. And overall, we're looking at overall salary and employment benefits cost of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. The next chart, and I can spend any amount of time that you like on any of these charts, on the bottom of nineteen for full disclosure, is a summary of all of longevity schedules that are employed in the town. The public safeties are based on percentages of salary, where the public works, general municipal employees and non-organized, is based on a per-dollar value per year. When we say a hundred and fourteen dollars per year, if somebody's been with us for ten years, it would mean that they would be entitled to eleven hundred and forty-four dollars in longevity payments for those schedules. And obviously, when we look at the four or five percent for EMS, or the six, eight, or ten percent on the police, it would be as a percentage of their salary, based on the years of service that they have with the town. Longevity program costs are about three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. A hundred and fifty-six of that's with the police department, and the remaining a hundred and eighty is for municipal employee base and EMS. Moving on to page twenty, page twenty provides a summary on the employee retirement severance costs. As people leave the town's service, they're entitled to accrued vacation and a portion of accrued sick leave, or unused sick leave. We're anticipating that there will be eight retirements that occur during the current year, or a cost of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And the net value of the compensated absences reserve fund will go down to about one point one, one point one-five million dollars as of June of two thousand and twelve. We're proposing transfers from the various municipal departments, principally the police department, at a hundred thousand. Of that hundred and thirty thousand, that's shown for transfers from the general fund in the twelve-thirteen year, with payouts of approximately a hundred and fifty. So, we're still looking to maintain about a one point one million dollar balance within the compensated absences reserve fund. I think, as I've mentioned in the past, we attempt to take any severance pays out of the operating budget. If there's insufficient funds available within that operating account, then it would be transferred as a expense against the absences reserve fund. Healthcare insurance, I'm providing you with what the existing schedule is. As of January first, all of our contracts have got fifteen percent co-pay requirements for EMS, police, council ninety-four, and non-organized. We've also budgeted NEA at the fifteen percent. That contract is not complete, and at the current time, they're paying as a percentage of salary, and it's nowhere close to the fifteen percent rate. At this point, they're paying based on, if they're making forty thousand, they're paying four percent. If they're making fifty thousand, they're paying five percent. Once that contract's completed, we'll be able to update that chart. The overall increase for the healthcare and dental transfer is a point seven percent increase. General fund healthcare funding for twelve-year will be three million forty-three thousand, or about twenty-two thousand dollars more than the current year appropriation of three million twenty-one thousand. School and municipal, as of July of two thousand and eight, began contracting our services through the West Bay Healthcare Collaborative and the dental services on a cost-plus basis. The program has been highly effective in terms of cost containment is concerned. It's noted that in the two thousand eight, two thousand and nine year, we began also accounting for OPEB. I think the council will recall, we've established a trust fund for the OPEB. We've also had our third actuarial review completed for the cost of other post-employment benefits. At this point, the ARC, or the annual required contribution, is eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Of that eight hundred and twenty-two, five hundred and fifty-two goes out directly in payments to existing retirees for their healthcare costs. The remaining two hundred and seventy thousand is for the healthcare benefits that existing employees will be earning toward retirement. We are funding the full ARC for the, I believe it's our third consecutive year, and the trust fund, that money is transferred to the trust fund on an annual basis. I've also provided you with, for full disclosure purposes, with what the healthcare and retirement benefits are for each of the employment groups. As you can see, with the EMS, under note number one, after twenty years, they get thirteen hundred and thirty-three dollars per year for a three-year period. If they're here for thirty years, it would be up to four thousand. Police are coverage through age sixty-five. That is based on the existing contracts that are in place with the police unit. Council ninety-four is coverage to age sixty-five for anybody that started working before July of two thousand and five. Anybody hired subsequent to that date gets a stipend as provided in note number one, with the thirteen hundred and thirty-three dollars for twenty years, or the four thousand for the thirty years. Non-organized receive the same benefit as the council, as the NEA, which at the current time is at two thousand after twenty years for three years, four thousand after twenty-five years, and five thousand after thirty years, is what's anticipated. And that's for those hired prior to two thousand and six. Those hired after two thousand and six are at the lower rates. So, the detail is there as far as what we're providing for benefits. And again, all of our labor contracts are up for negotiation at this point. Also, for disclosure purposes, we note that as of June thirty for two thousand and eleven, the healthcare reserve fund had a unrestricted balance of about four point five million dollars. That unrestricted balance is made up of two components. That which is associated with the municipal program, and the second which is associated with the school program. The town has approximately two point two-five million, and the school's two point two-six million share in that total four point five million dollars. Why does the town maintain a healthcare reserve fund? Healthcare reserve fund, when we're on a cost-plus basis, we can forecast what our cost of service will be. However, if in any given year, there were multiple people with serious injuries or serious illnesses that are covered through our healthcare plans, we may need to overspend what the appropriation is. So, if we have three million dollars budgeted and we spend four million dollars, that money has to come from somewhere. Rather than it becoming an expense of a future budget, we hold those monies in reserve. We're also able to use those funds to pay down what future cost would be. And also, that money is there. In dealing with actuaries on healthcare, one of the things that we need to guard against is concerns with multiple high-risk individuals that may have difficulties in a given year, as well as the potential for pandemics. Because a pandemic would in fact have profound impact on what your cost of healthcare services are. If you run a prospective premium, you don't worry about it because Blue Cross or United has guaranteed that the cost won't exceed what your premium is. In a cost-plus basis, you're taking the risk as to what the true costs are associated with what your medical expenses are. And we'll talk about that more in detail on next Thursday, a week from this Thursday, when we review the benefits accounts. The retirement system, I've provided a short narrative here in the narrative relative to the changes that have occurred based on the November two thousand and eleven General Assembly amendments to the MURS system. I'm not going to go into detail unless there's questions from the council on that. I've tried to highlight where some of the major changes are. I think the most important thing is to look at page twenty-one, and this is really not new news to the council, but what the contribution requirements will be. We're expecting to see declining costs associated with the police unit, declining costs associated with the EMS. But, what we're also expecting to see is an increase in the municipal employees, where we're seeing the rate increase from the twelve-year to the thirteen-year by two point eight percent. That is going to have a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar impact on us. Yet, at the same time, with the declining costs associated with police and EMS, our overall increase for the contribution to MURS will be about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in the twelve-thirteen year. Healthcare, the retirement account also includes about seventy-five hundred dollars in direct pay for police pensions. We have the spouse of a deceased member of the police department, who is not a member of the state retirement system, who continues to receive a direct pension from the town of seventy-four hundred and eighty dollars. There's also about thirty-five thousand dollars that is budgeted for non-state associated retirement funding. So, the overall cost that we're looking at is about a hundred thousand dollars over what the current year appropriation is. So, instead, we're looking at one million one hundred and twelve thousand dollars. I've also provided, in the budget narrative on page twenty-two, a reporting on the unfunded actuarial accrued liability associated with the town's three pension systems. As shown here, the pension system for South Kingston, police, EMS, and municipal, has assets of sixty-six point five million dollars. It has liabilities, however, of seventy-two point five million. So, there's approximately five point six, five point nine, or approximately six million dollars in net value that is an unfunded liability. That means that our funding ratio at this point is ninety-one point eight percent. If you recall in November, what the state's objective was, was to get the state's teacher system and state employee system up from its current level up to eighty percent. So, the municipal systems for South Kingston, and we've been a member of this retirement system since, I believe, either the late fifties or early sixties, we have always made all of our full payments. And in fact, there's no credit taken on that, since if we didn't make the payments, the state would have reduced our state aid to make the pension payments. But, at this point, our three systems are set at ninety-one point eight percent. This is not a local pension system, like many municipalities have. There's approximately twenty-five municipal pension systems that are managed outside of the MURS system that have huge unfunded liabilities. South Kingston is not involved with any of those. All of our retirement groups are funded in excess of the eighty percent. In fact, our police is at eighty-eight percent. EMS is up at a hundred and forty-five, and the municipals are in at ninety-one point eight. So, the overall ratio is above ninety percent. Municipal insurance, next year, we're looking at about a twenty-four thousand dollar increase, and that's shown on page twenty-three. The increase that's there is associated with, we're not expecting the inter-local trust to issue a dividend this year. Expenses associated with property liability have been high, as well as the insurance market has changed for reinsurance. And what we've seen is the reinsurance market, the cost of reinsurance go up in excess of twenty-five percent in the current year, and we're expecting probably another twenty percent next year. The inter-local trust works where we self-insure on a base amount, and then purchase reinsurance on that excess amount. And because of that, we won't see dividends. We will see dividends in the workers' comp market, but we won't see them in the property liability for the twelve-thirteen year. So, we're losing about seventeen thousand dollars in program credits for the year. Plus, based on the cost of reinsurance, we're expecting the overall premium increases to go up about almost twelve thousand dollars on the property liability. I would note that the excess liability line is because we, as a town, purchase excess insurance. We're covered for excess insurance for a five million dollar loss. So, anything, if there was a liability for the town in excess of the base amount, which is a million, we're insured up to five million. So, if there was something over five million, then that would become a municipal responsibility. The first five million would be covered through insurance. Capital budget, I don't think there's much that needs to be said on that unless there's questions. We're talking about a budget of one million two hundred and ten thousand dollars, or twenty-nine thousand dollars less than what we budgeted in the current year. Moving on to page twenty-four, debt service. As noted, the debt service associated with the tax rate is down about ten cents. I will caution that the sixty cents to the fifty cents, there's also, that's not inclusive of the overlay. If we added in the overlay, it would probably be sixty-one down to fifty-one. But, that includes just what the gross costs are. And you can see that the major change there is the school debt going from two million eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand down to the two million three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So, there's a decline of the five hundred and eighteen thousand. So, overall, gross debt is at five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars less, or three point five versus four point one million in the current year. And again, this is planned. This has been planned as a means of dealing with tough economic times, where we've tightened our belt as far as capital projects that are desirable but are not necessary have been, have put off. We have not, however, stopped doing capital projects that are necessary, where the cost would be higher if we were negligent in not addressing roofs or those type of issues with our school department. The third-party revenues are shown here. Again, the net property taxes go from two point five, two point six, down to about one point, to two point one. And again, this is where I said, we're down five hundred and thirteen on expenses, but we're really down as far as property tax, only four hundred and thirty thousand. The next part of the message deals with the utility funds, and we move on to general fund. On the utility funds, we're looking at the water fund up about thirty-one thousand dollars. And we'll go into detail on this when we do the utilities. I believe that's tomorrow night. We are looking for the need for rate increases on both water and wastewater. Water will go from a hundred and seventy-five dollar base charge for five thousand cubic feet of water up to a hundred and seventy-eight dollars, I'm sorry, a hundred and seventy-nine dollars, I believe. I'm sorry, a hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And so, it'll be a three dollar increase on the base rate. We're also looking at increasing the additional unit costs. Additional unit costs are really the units that you'll see at Mary Carpenter's or Roy Carpenter's. And we're also looking for an increase from a dollar, two dollars and ninety-seven cents per hundred cubic feet on the excess water. That will be increased for the year, starting July one of two thousand and twelve, and it'll go into effect for the thirteen-fourteen year. The wastewater fund, we're looking at a budgetary increase of about thirty-eight, or thirty-nine thousand dollars. And there again, we're also looking at a modest increase from And there again, we're also looking at a modest increase from $225 for the base unit to $229, or $4 increase per year, and also seeing the excess rate go from 285 up to 290. Again, when we charge on the excess rate, that goes into effect for the 12-13 year, but it's not billed until the 13-14 year. We do not want to increase excess rates retroactively, which we would be doing if we were to put them into effect in 12-13. So any rate increases that we talk about here, people would know about in advance and be able to make appropriate adjustments in their use patterns if that was important to them. The solid waste fund, there really are very few changes there. There's no changes that are recommended or necessary as far as bag tag for the year as well. Moving on to the senior program on the narrative, and again, we'll go into detail on this when we review each of these funds. What we're looking at is a increased cost of about $9,800 to the general fund for South Kingstown's contributions. I can't impress enough that the senior services program really provides regional services both to Narragansett and to the, and to North Kingstown, who participates in the Adult Day Services Program. And we'll go through the detail. But as you can see on that chart, we've got $491,000 of the total 752 coming from the three municipalities. And between Narragansett and South, Narragansett and North Kingstown, we're expecting almost $140,000 of the $750,000 budget coming from those two communities. Narragansett participates both in the nutrition program, the senior center, and adult day services. North Kingstown participates in the adult day services program. Again, $9,800 increase as far as South Kingstown's contribution. That's the general fund contribution going from a total of the $341,000 up to $351,000. The last fund that we'll touch on tonight and go into detail at a future budget hearing is the transfer to the school fund. As noted, the school department had originally proposed a budget that, and in the amount of $58,810,000, which was a $376,000 increase over the current year budget. To fund that budget would have required $750,000 roughly in additional tax appropriation. It would have meant that the schools would have been up 12 cents over what their current year association was with the tax levy. We point out the financial position or fund balance associated with the school fund, and I provide you with two different estimates. The school estimate is what's provided through the school committee's budget. The town estimate is an estimate that Allen has specifically prepared that is looking at potentially up to $670,000. It'll be someplace between those two. We were not able to get a good handle on what the personnel expenditure is for full-time at the schools this year. We didn't have enough time to really be able to review that in detail. But if we use the school numbers, we still think that there's probably a margin of $300,000 that is there. The projected surplus position that I'm reporting is net of $110,000. So in other words, what I'm saying is that the schools would have been recognizing $432,000. Allen's would have been almost $800,000. And why I say it's net of, one of the recommendations that I've made to the school committee is to use about $110,000 that they were projecting to put into the 12-13 year to spend money that is unassigned in the current year, based on the surplus position that they would have. Because, and we'll talk about those in detail, there's two items. One is that I've recommended that they spend $60,000 in the current year as a portion of the track rehabilitation program that was a capital budget item at $135,000, $130,000. The reason that I've recommended that they initiate that project now is that I believe that project should be completed before September 1st. And I think that they need to get started on that project and get a full price. I'm still not comfortable that we know exactly what the price of that project will be. I'm sure they won't know either until that project's initiated and they rip off the top layer to see what the under conditions are. That will have to be repaired before a new track surface is installed. Second item was a $50,000 item that was budgeted in their equipment budget, which would be for the re-keying of the high school. This would allow for really a computerized building access system, which would be COD-based, so that they would have complete control over who was issued CODs. CODs could be deactivated rather than keys having to be returned. It would also provide them with a computer record as to who enters the school at what time and what time they were to exit the building if they were the last ones out. So it would provide them with better controls than are in place now. It was included in the school committee's budget. That's also one that I think could be completed before the end of the fiscal year. And if they're running a surplus position, which they are, would be better, rather than have that money go into fund balance, have that money expended as a means of reducing what the tax effort requirements will be for the, for the next year. The school revenue statement. I spent a considerable amount of time trying to provide the council with some background information on the governor's budget, because I think that the governor's budget is going to have difficulty being passed in the form that it has been presented at. His overall budget would increase education aid funding by about $69.7 million. And that is going to be used to replace the federal education jobs program, which is worth $32 million. That South Kingstown receives about $430,000 from, as well as to pay for the second year of the school funding formula, which is about $21.6 million. There's also a categoric aid program of $5.1 million, and an additional $11 million, which is a new initiative by the governor, which would be to accelerate payments to those communities that allegedly are underfunded in the education aid formula. As you recall, with the education aid formula, those communities that were found to be receiving more than they're entitled to had a 10-year phase-out. So if you had $4 million more than what you should be getting, you'd lose $400,000 a year in aid. Conversely, those that were underfunded based on the formula would, over a seven-year period, be able to get their payments. This $11 million is to accelerate the seven-year payment to a lesser, to a lesser schedule so that those communities would receive the money quicker than had been approved in the initial funding formula legislation. Funding for all of the increased education aid, a major portion of it, 39.5 million of it, would come from increasing the meals tax by 2 percent. I'm not sure that we've seen anybody provide any type of level of support for the meals tax increase to generate that 39.5. And I point out here that if, in fact, the General Assembly were not to agree to that $39.5 million increase by putting a 2 percent additional meals tax in place, without that approval, the General Assembly would have to identify other sources to generate that $39.5 million, or to reduce expenditure forecasts and recommendations that were in the governor's budget. So if that action occurs and there's expenditure reductions in the state budget, it could mean a softening of the dollars that would be available for South Kingstown school system based on what the budget has, has been submitted. The school fund also experienced about a $200,000 reduction in the Medicaid program reimbursement. Medicaid reimburses the district for mandated noneducational services that are provided to eligible students. Reimbursement rates have been on the decline there, and we're expecting to see $200,000 less. We would agree with that, with the analysis based on the level of funding that they've received so far from that program during the 11-12 year. School department, as I said, was requesting $747,000 more, which would have resulted in a 12-cent tax rate increase. We have recommended a restructuring of that. And as noted earlier, we would see the schools taking a reduction. I'm going to, I'm proposing at this point $560,000 in revisions from the school department's budget. As I've already noted, $110,000 isn't a reduction in expense, but rather a transfer of the expense from the 12-13 year back into the 11-12 year. So essentially, we're looking at a $450,000 reduction in costs. Where do those costs come from? We'll, if you move first to page 31, page 31 really provides the focus. What the finance department does as a courtesy on an annual basis is reviews the last three fiscal years and looks at what the actual expenses are by line item within the school budget as of January 31 of each successive year. And then provides what the actual expenses were for the entire year. And then looks to the budget proposals submitted by the school department to determine whether we see that the budget estimates by line item are in line with what the spending patents have been for the prior years. Again, I'll give my annual disclaimer. Town administration does not look at school program reductions. If there are new personnel that are being proposed, we're not suggesting that they either stay or be removed. Our position is to review the budget from a budgetary standpoint in terms of, are the, is the school program that's been proposed by the school committee properly funded or overfunded? If it's overfunded, we recommend reductions in those line items as a means of ensuring that the proper expenditure level is forecast, and that may result in reductions in the school program. We have a list of, of all of the different items that we had recommended reductions on. School administration met with Allen and I, went over the adjustments that were really Allen's recommendations that I was fully supportive of in terms of where reductions could occur. I also provide you with a narrative description as to why I made the reductions or adjustments in each of those, those object codes. But again, the total is $560,000, of which $450,000 is actual reductions in the budget. That's what allows us to get to a, a property tax transfer of only $147,000 for the 12-13 year for the schools. If you back up a page and you look at the revenue statement that's presented on page 30, you'll see that we have used the state aid numbers that the school committee had, had provided. Again, I've echoed my concern to the school administration as to the precarious nature of the governor's proposal, particularly as it relates to the meals tax. We have also recommended that they reduce the tuition income by $39,500. That was because they were, there are, at this point, two North Kingstown students that attend special programs in South Kingstown. They had forecast a loss of both of those students. In discussions with them, we believe that at minimum one, if not both of those, will return. If one were to return, that 39.5 is, is appropriate as far as the funding level. And again, it's down from the $234,000 that had been anticipated to be received by the school department. The other change that's there, we've used their undesignated funds, which is 25 percent of what's undesigned. So what they're using is $535,000, which is 25 percent of the $2.1 million that was unassigned as of June 30 of 2011. Medicaid at the $600,000 level, down from $800,000. And miscellaneous, we use their number again. So we have total revenues of $58.25 million. On the expenditure statement, you can see that we've made the, the $560,000 in adjustments. And again, that's 450 in reductions and 110 in reassignment. And that's how we would end up with a budget that would come in with a zero tax rate increase for the 12-13 year. I'd answer any other questions that you have as far as the budget message is concerned. If there are no questions, I would say that I'd ask you to turn to pages N1, which is identified as GF narrative on your tab, and GF1, which is identified as general fund on your tabs.
Excuse me, Steve. I do believe we have one question here.
Jim? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand.
Steve, on the, you don't have to turn the page back, but on the metered sales estimate, the district owns all the meters in all the homes.
On the water system?
On the water system.
Yes, the, the system is owned by, all, all of the meters are owned by South Kingstown. In fact, we bonded those a couple of years ago.
I remember the bonding. Roy Carpenter's and Mary's in that district?
Roy Carpenter's only has a, a main service line that goes in that serves about 12 units and the, and the small store. Mary's has all the additional units.
So, so Mary has one for each of the 287 units, whatever it is?
Correct.
Okay.
But you also have the additional units at Wacomo Park as well.
Are they on a master or each individually?
I believe that they are on, individually. They come off service lines into the individual units.
Did the district charge for those installations, or is it part of the billing, part of the pricing?
Yeah, new services have a service cost for us to do the installations. We also have, if many houses have turnoff service, they have to pay those fees as well. That's part of the budget.
Is that over the life of the, how long do these things last, 10, 15 years?
Well, the meters are, the meters are, are not, they're integrated into the debt requirement. So, and the debt is, debt service is a component of the revenues that we have to generate. So obviously, they're paying for them as part of the administrative overhead associated with, with the water service.
Okay. And my other question was, can you just give me the carry forward from the NEASK contract since it expired in June 30, 2009? What's the salary increase? I think you mentioned the healthcare was roughly 4 to 5 percent depending on salary. But what, what, I mean, yeah, but what are the salary numbers coming forward? What's been the compounded increases?
The contract that we have budgeted for, there is no contract in place.
Right.
Since, since it expired in 2009. We had anticipated a zero in the first year, a two and a quarter in the second year, and a two and a quarter in the third year, which is the same exact salary increases that were provided to police, EMS, and nonorganized, and Council 94. We had also anticipated that there would be a gradual increase associated with the healthcare, and that is still under negotiation. The contract hasn't been completed yet, Jim. There could be retroactive costs associated with it.
All right, but what are the zero, two and a quarter, two and a quarter? What are the actual salary increases?
They haven't been provided with any salary increases.
Oh, I thought it came forward with that contract that expired. I, I thought the terms...
We have not provided salary increases to any union that doesn't have a signed contract with us.
All right, so that last year ending '09, that, that's the salary that they've kept?
That's correct. But any salary adjustments that would occur if we were to sign a contract today would have retroactive implications associated with them.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Steve, I just have a quick question, and it's probably appropriate to bring it up at this school committee joint session, but... at this school committee joint session, but I didn't know if there was any dialogue with the extended school year program salaries being reduced on the school side for special education by 30,000. Is there any dialogue there?
Yeah, the, the main reason for that, as, as I explained in the narrative, is when we look at the actual expenses associated with the program, they have advised us that the program would stay at the current service level. Yet when we looked at the actual expenses that have been incurred over the 11-12 year, and there's really only one week left of that program that would be incurred during the 11-12 year, they were 30,000 behind where they would need to be. So it would, so they were overbudgeting by $30,000 when we brought this to their attention. And again, it's showing them the three years. They agreed that the reduction could, could be made on that, that basis.
Thank you.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
No, that is absolutely correct. And just give me one second just to. Basically, it, it, it relates to the summer program, so obviously, the amount that they've spent in the 11-12 year was spent in the summer of 2011. And that number was significantly below what they were looking for for the 12-13. There wasn't any increase in program, so we were, and there had been a trend that that program had been coming down over the years. So even with that change, there's still significant money in the 12-13 budget over what they spent in the 11-12. And they've by about $30,000. Clearly, they have some cuts there if there are any increases in the expenditure for that particular program.
I know that there was a change in the special education law a couple of years ago, which affected many families. And then there was also a cut, cutback on the Friday services that were provided to children. So maybe that may be in relation to what we're seeing here. Thank you.
Okay, if we start on N1, that provides you with the narrative. If you want to skip the narrative and deal just with the numbers, you go to GF1. And if you really want to multitask, you take the narrative out of your, your book and you put it alongside. I think the easiest thing to do is to stay with the numbers itself and, you know, and I would ask you to spend some time and take a look at the narrative because the departments have done an excellent job in terms of trying to provide better definition as to where their programs are and where they're going and different things that should be of interest for the budget. If we start out on page GF1, town council, we're looking for no change, zero increase. This provides for the 2,000 stipend for the four council members and 3,000 stipend for the council president, as well as the cost associated with the camera work for the, for the council meetings. So that's 13,500. Budget adoption process, the budget adoption process is if a referendum is required in, in June of 2013, it would be paid for through this account. We're anticipating that a cost of $10,096 or $1,063 more than what the, the current year. Municipal legal services, if you're following on the narrative, I've given you a detail there as far as what, how much the solicitor gets, special legal counsel gets, criminal prosecution. I'm not recommending, nor did I in either the 9-10, the 8-9, 9-10, or 10-11 year, any increases in the solicitor or special legal counsel. I am adjusting at the request of the solicitor, the, the amount that goes into municipal only and planning. And that is based on the fact of what the actual hours are that are being expended. Several years ago, there was a great deal more direct cost associated with the special legal counsel for planning than there is now, based on the level of activity of subdivision and planning functions. What we're looking at is that the projected cost is about $172 per hour for a blended rate for the solicitor and special legal counsel. And we're still, what I've done is to increase by almost 3,000, almost $3,000, the criminal prosecution cost. You know, we're looking at, on a yearly basis, we're seeing increases in the number of hours that prosecution's spending. And that's, your appointment, it's Terry Simpson on that. During, over the last several years, over the last five years, he's been spending over 315 hours. At a $30,000 retainer, he's still only going to be at a $95 level. But even with me bringing it up to $3,000. So the overall increase would take us from 163, 216, 165,000, I'm sorry, up to the 167, 934. We also account for about $5,000 on litigation outside of the retainer and expenses and, and court costs. Every time we file in court, we have to pay those costs. We reimburse the solicitor or solicitor's office on those, those costs.
Steve, I just have a question. In the narrative, it mentions that the 10 of them on the probate court, 10 were for guardianships. Could you just explain, or could somebody explain what, what that's in reference to, a guardianship?
I'd have to have Dale explain that.
A guardianship in probate court?
Right.
Well, somebody's, you didn't have, out of their income, they were unable to take care of their, 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 their probate court and have a guardian appointed to oversee their person in our state.
Okay, that's what I thought it was, but I just wasn't sure, so I'm glad I asked. Thank you.
We're not forecasting any or recommending increase in the probate court. That's would stay at $4,000. Moving on to the town clerk's office, the town clerk's office is up 2.1% or about $5,300. Most of that's directly associated with what adjustments would occur within employees. Everything else in the contractual services and supplies and materials is relatively If there's no questions, we'll move on with public information. Public information is the town's website as well as the reverse 911 system. The public information is about $9,900 that the reverse 911 costs. We also spend as far as the web, about $4,280 on that service. $2,000 as far as site maintenance, about $1,400 for the email web hosting, and $912 for the service DSL line that is used for access into the, into the web. So that, that is about a $420 decrease. Reason why is the setup cost was in the first year for the E911, and the current year, that won't be necessary in the 12-13 year. Moving on to the canvassing authority, as I mentioned, the increase here is because we're conducting, we're budgeting for the conduct of the September 2012 primary and the November 2012 presidential election. The budgeting that's been put in place assumes that we would have 12 sites for the primary and 13 for the presidential. We'd still have the same 12, but you'd have to have the, a 13th polling place opened up at the town hall. There's also cost for us having to administer the absentee program, custodial services at the various buildings that we're using, and general overtime. So that's why we're, we're seeing an increase here of, I think it's $24,000 over the current year. Personnel is the same as it is in each of the other municipal departments with the adjustments there. There is an $8,000 decrease anticipated with postage, and that's directly related to the fact that during the current year, we had to send out mailers to, to people as far as what the new voting districts would be. And that won't be replicated in the 12-13 year. Other than that, there's really no other adjustments in the program. The, the primary as far as personnel costs, primary will cost about 13.2, and the presidential about 14.3. And then there's one full-time employee here, which between salary and longevity is equal to about $40,000. No questions, I'll move on to the town manager's office. Town manager's office is up 2.2% or about $7,000. Again, about $6,600 is associated with personnel accounts. Each of the other contractual supplies and equipment are down from what the current year levels are. There is one increase, and that's in the cost of fuel and lubricants for the operation of the two vehicles that are in that office for about $500. Moving on, personnel administration, one full-time employee plus longevity. The part-time, there's a, a part-time person that's shared between the manager's office and the, and the personnel office. In the personnel office, that person's responsible for doing the leave time accounting so that, because we have to account for sick, vacation, personal day use, and that's done from the timesheets. So that, that's in addition to the full-time personnel. This budget also provides for the necessary training and education that is provided. Here, we're talking about additional training in terms of upgrades on software as well as supervisory training that continues to be provided through this program. Moving on, the League of Cities and Towns, there's no increase that's recommended, nor has there been one, I think, over the last eight years. Based on the REAP program or the energy aggregation program, the, the league has been able to maintain a stable rate base for what cities and towns pay. It's still based on a per capita basis, but the per capita goes back all the way to 2,000. So we end up with benefit on that basis. The town hall account, town hall is up by less than 1%. We're looking at an overall increase of about $142. There are adjustments here. We've been able to decrease postage, I think like most businesses. We're seeing more things that are handled through email rather than through, through US postal services. Obviously, our largest cost is the tax bill distribution, which does go through US mail. We're also looking at the utilities decrease here, electrical service cost, as you'll see throughout the budget, is anticipated to decline based on the contract that the council authorized for the supply component of our electric bills for each of the municipal Heating fuel is up $4,500, and I think if we were putting the budget together again today, it probably would be up more than that, because, you know, we're forecasting that 18 months in advance. Moving on to finance department, finance department, again, all of the increase is in the personal services accounts, and we're looking at an overall increase of $400 in the printing and binding for a $9,351 increase. There's considerable detail within the narrative on several of the departments. Alan's got a significant narrative that talks about the various things that we're working on and will be working on in the 12-13 year associated with the department. But I think some of the major improvements that have occurred in the tax collection effort, I, I would ask Alan to spell me for a minute and give them a talk as far as the things that we're doing differently and how the ACH as well as the credit card system is working for us.
Yeah, the, the ACH, which is what the option that people have as far as paying their quarterly tax bills, and what they can do is just have it automatically taken out of their account. We send out a notice about a week before that's going to take place, let them know what the amount is going to be. You know, a couple of years, we've sent out a, a mailer with the tax bill to put the form in there for people to sign up. It, it has been very successful, and we got just under 1,000 people now that are participating in that program on a quarterly basis. So it just, it, it does require some work on the, the part of the tax collector's office as far as maintaining that list, make sure people aren't changing bank accounts, that type of thing. But at the same time, it just saves all that money coming across the counter, whether it's through the mail during a peak collection time, or people coming in and paying over the counter, which obviously, you know, then the staff has to get up, take care of that person. So it's, you know, obviously, we're collecting the funds, but at the same time, it, they can't process the mail. So it's just getting the money in the bank a lot faster. That's been very effective. We also added the credit card option, and I think that's helped on a lot of the motor vehicles, that type of bill where people may not have paid in the past and they're using that credit card. So, and that, and that's reflected in our collection rate, which, you know, I just, I, I give a lot of credit to the tax collector's office. They do a great job down there as far as staying on the delinquent taxes. You've heard me talk about the collection rate, and after a 30-month period, we're looking at a 99.95% collection rate on taxes, which is just, you know, phenomenal.
That's less than $35,000 that's uncollected out of 64.5 million.
And if you look at the years where that credit on the motor vehicle was at 6,000, it's actually 99.96%. So we can't get much better than that, and they do a great job. We have.
Yes, we can.
Yeah. I guess you can always do better, but it's just a, it's an aggressive collection program, but it works, and that's what allows us to keep the overlay at the level that it is rather than increasing it, which would require more taxes to be levied. The other thing which the IT department and, and Steve's office and, and some of my staff have worked on as far as the online purchasing system. That's up and running now. It's a system that, there's, I think, 12 or 13 communities that are part of that. We're posting all the bids online, so the vendors would have to register, they can go in, and then they take the documents off the website that Newport maintains. Obviously, Steve talked about reducing mailing costs. That's helped in that regard, because now we're not mailing out those thick bid packages. The vendor is going to the website and printing them themselves. That's in its infant stages, but I think it's going to be a very successful program.
So one of the keys there is that we're able to reach out to many, many, many vendors that would not be doing clipping service as to the services that we're looking for or the equipments that we're looking to buy. So we've opened up a much larger potential pool of bidders on the different things that we would be acquiring, and hopefully, we'll get better prices as a result of it. The program, as, as Alan said, we've just started using the program, but we've found it to be quite effective so far. And I think one of the other keys is that many times when you put bid documents out, you get questions from vendors, and you have to provide amendments or addendums to the bid specs. And when you do that, it's very important that everybody is aware of exactly what it is, and you can account for the fact that everybody had the same information. By doing it through the, through this type of a program, once somebody signs up and gets, gets the specifications, any of them that go out, go out to everybody that was, that has signed up for that specific spec. Therefore, we know that people are being treated in a uniform manner and that there's no slip-ups that somebody said, well, I bid the item, but I didn't know the addendum that has come out, and we can't prove that they got it. Now we've got a case where we can show that we've actually sent emails out to them on any addenda to the, the different projects or the equipment that we're bidding. So there's some major improvements. I think the other improvement that Alan and I will be looking at, and several of them, we're looking to replace the charter for the financial management system. the charter for the financial management system. And, uh, that is not included in the budget, but what we anticipate is that if we're prepared to make recommendations for conversion to a new system, that it may well be that we would recommend use of, uh, of fund balance as a means of being able to support that project, or if there's surplus funds available within current year for the future years. So, if, uh, there's no questions on finance?
Yeah, just one, one other thing in regards to the healthcare. We're currently out to bid, um, on the healthcare. We've, uh, as you know, we're a member of West Bay. We've got about nine thousand members. We've joined with the trust, um, which is a separate pool. They've got about seven thousand members. So there's about sixteen thousand a group. We have, I've been involved in that negotiation process and, um, you know, the, the Blue Cross and, it, it boils down to Blue Cross and United. And, uh, you know, it would appear that they have sharpened their pencil, um, the final, you know, they're still doing a comparative analysis. Mil, they've hired Milliman as a consultant, so they're putting together the numbers now, and we're on the, the final stages of that. So, um, we should see that hopefully come forward within the next two to three weeks. Along the lines of healthcare, um, also the, one of the other things that, um, you know, I'm, I'm proud of, and again, it's been a staff effort, and that would be the early retirement program that, um, the federal program, um, that was run under national healthcare. And there was five billion dollars that was available. We were able to submit and receive seventy-seven thousand dollars for the school department for some of their healthcare expenses and about thirty-two thousand dollars for, uh, town expenses. I've just submitted another request for about forty-five thousand for the school department. Unfortunately, that five billion is all gone. So in less than a year and a half, that money was, uh, you know, five billion dollars went nationwide. But we were able to get a combination of around a hundred thousand, which, uh, you know, that has gone into the healthcare fund and will be used to reduce premiums for the next year.
And if it hadn't been Alan's perseverance in dealing with that federal website, which is just impossible to deal with, uh, he wouldn't take no for an answer, and it's resulted in about a hundred thousand dollars. Certainly a portion of that, seventy-seven thousand, will be in the school side of the ledger, but these are the type of services that are necessary for us to do jointly in terms of the healthcare. That study that's being done with that many insured lives, over seventeen thousand insured lives, uh, again, is something that needs to be looked at as a consolidation of services. You're talking about, uh, almost all the municipalities coming together with the two different pools, uh, to really be able to deal in a big-time way with Blue Cross and United and that fast cost. Now certainly administrative costs associated with healthcare management is a small portion of the overall cost of healthcare, but if we can control that cost, uh, it's going to save dollars in the long run.
And, and just one of the things, uh, again, along those lines on that healthcare bid that we're looking at is carving out the, the prescription drugs from either United or Blue Cross. And there's significant savings involved with that. Right now, we're trying to get Blue Cross and United to give us a final pricing if we don't carve it out, uh, and hopefully that will be reduced, so there'll be additional savings. But one way or the other, um, I, just over that seventeen thousand lives, I think we were talking about four million dollars that that carve-out can possibly save.
But again, what Blue Cross and United are trying to do is to say if we carve it out and save that money, we're going to increase the administrative cost of, uh, it's a squeeze of the money. It's going to pop out in one direction or the other. But that's why if you can deal with them from a power base of that many controlled lives, uh, it's something that, uh, we should be able to get best price. Far different than when we were on an annual basis negotiating directly with Blue Cross on a prospective premium where we had absolutely no leverage whatsoever. So, uh, been a lot of changes made. Healthcare is still a very expensive proposition, but at the same time, I, I think the cost containment that has, uh, has occurred has certainly, uh, uh, lessened some of that cost, uh, both on the school side and on the, uh, the town side, and, uh, certainly Alan's been responsible for that, that effort on our behalf. Next office is the tax assessors' office. Two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, the house at sixty-nine hundred. As you're aware, we'll be doing the revaluation, uh, for December thirty-one of two thousand and twelve. The, uh, impact of that won't be, uh, on the roll, won't, uh, occur until the thirteen, fourteen year. So this is the last year on the assessment roll. We'll start two years ago, or two years ago. This will be our third year. Next year will be a full revaluation will be completed. So, uh, that, uh, that Gene Sheldon visited, uh, not that he wasn't visiting this year, it's certainly true. Next account is the assessment board review. Because we're in the third year, the department made the adjustments expected as far as usually would be made, it's down a few dollars. That will go back up next year if there's consulting, uh, reviewing, uh, on, on, uh, we have, uh, mission to be for. Transformation Technology Division, this is really a division of the finance, uh, program. We have three persons budgeting, uh, they're doing that department at this time. One of those positions is vacant, uh, currently in rebooting, uh, for that purpose, uh, for that person at this time. All of course here are really the, uh, internal operations of the, uh, network. If you go through the narrative and explain the various, uh, things that this department is responsible for, as well as the level of, uh, uh, network, uh, interface that is required, and also many of the common stocks, whether it's the, uh, you know, stock paper or, uh, pensions that, uh, are drawn away out, and, uh, professional services that are necessary to, uh, provide security services. Some of the software or hardware, uh, issues, uh, obligated to be secured. We're looking at about forty-four hundred dollar increase, uh, within this account. At this time, we're looking at a reclassification of one of the positions who are high at age rate, essentially they're unable to attract, uh, the, the talent and the resources we need to, uh, to assist the, uh, for that kind of, uh, uh. New graphic information, uh, certainly for this company, the awareness of GIS. Again, with, uh, one full-time story here, like, uh, two, uh, two, uh, yours, uh, you're really on no change in the budget from, uh, from the company. The program is, we will continue to, uh, expand the uses of GIS as well as the, and have it as well. Applications. One of the things that's going to be coming up new is that the state has just got new aerial photography, two thousand and eleven, uh, maps that, flights that were, uh, that will be incorporated into our, uh, into our system. We're still able to look at, uh, four different sets of maps. This is very helpful when, uh, changes occur with the property, you know, back in time they, what the property looked like, uh, several years ago. So, and with each improvement as far as each flight, this radio, uh, we've been able to build a map, uh, both as far as the topography, uh, and, uh, I think with the latest provision, there'll also be potential three-dimensional, uh, map in some of the buildings. So, uh, GIS is still, uh, a growing area, and, uh, it's certainly also an instrumental and control that we'll have to have in place, something we've developed that occurs. As a consequence of where, we're able to do modeling based on the, uh, the estimates that come in, we can see where the value changes are going to occur and actually be able to color code those, uh, those changes. The last time we were able to do that, we were able to see whether it was any type of many errors in terms of why a single piece of property stood out from the other properties in that neighborhood, and we were able to provide clarification. We've used a lot of, uh, deals that we had, uh, based on us being able to have a cleaner reval than we normally would if we didn't have the availability of the GIS, uh, capability.
Steve? Steve, can I just ask a question? Is the nature center over there on Asapond Road? Where is the nature center?
The nature center is on the, uh, Asapond Road. That's right before you get to the bike path on your, uh-
Right.
It would be on the left. It's the log, uh, log-
Cabin on the left. What, what, what is that used for? Do schools take trips there or?
It, it's used for recreation program. It's, uh, feed-based recreation program that are available to, that operate highly in the nature center, and they're part of the leisure services program through the recreation budget.
Thank you.
Post audit, we are out, uh, we, uh, out for, uh, proposals on the audit. We're anticipating that they'll use a hundred pieces of two thousand dollars on the, uh, cost of the audit for the, uh, for the general fund. That's about an eight point nine percent increase, or nineteen hundred and seventy-five dollars over what the current year is.
I, I will say on that though, Steve, that, um, based on all the accounting changes as far as the standards are concerned, and also the state requirements as far as the school budget with the UCOA and all those requirements, that, uh, we could see a surprise here, and it could be a little higher, but, um, hopefully, uh, you know, th- there will be funds available within that account so that, uh, we can absorb that, and, uh, if not, it, it may be something we have to go to the finance budget or the, the IT budget to generate additional funds to cover any additional costs. We open those bids, I think, in a week and a half, so we should have a better handle on it by, uh, next week.
UCOA, for those that are uninformed, the uniform chart of accounts that the state has required the school department to, uh, to begin to use. There's also legislation that's been submitted that would, uh, provide a, uh, uniform chart of account for municipal budgeting as well. That would require a committee to be set up and for that to be, uh, put together, but, uh, we suspect that that will be coming shortly. The, uh, the narrative also, in addition to the general fund on the audit, uh, forecast what the cost will be for each of the, uh, the various funds, water waste, water and solid waste. Overall, we expect the, uh, the progress to be stayed during the year before we have the, uh- Planning board, planning board, uh, gets paid, uh, at a, a stipend rate of twenty dollars per meeting attended, uh, for the, uh, what we've seen is the planning board members, uh, really do not petition for the stipend payments. We're expecting current year to, uh, spend about thirty-five hundred dollars. In the prior year, we only spent, uh, less than three thousand. We're budgeting the forty-six eighty, which is the same amount as in the current year. So there's no change that's recommended there. Planning department, we're seeing about a nine thousand dollar reduction. This is also a case where we're reclassifying, uh, the position rate, Raynix position will be down, uh, will be adjusted from a senior planner to a, uh, to a, to a lesser position. I don't know, but, uh, that is going to be useful, though. The overall, uh, whole, uh, cost of, uh, the, uh, again, it's, it's not really good positions, the senior level, but definitely about that, uh, we can get the adjustment to, uh, to reduce, uh, the, uh, spending. Zoning Board of Review, another agency that, uh, has, uh, twenty dollars per meeting starting, uh, after meetings over the past year, we've set them in three positions that, uh, uh, the, uh, program funding is up fifty dollars over what the current year is. Most of that is in the printing, uh, buying costs. If there's, uh, no questions, we'll move on to, uh, the zoning and building inspection. We're looking at a budget that's up forty-four hundred dollars. We have, uh, for, uh, for continuation of all the positions that, uh, are budgeted here, uh, we have one vacant position. We anticipate that, uh, if we want changes, that that is, uh, before we talk about first or doesn't, we'll probably have, uh, five times since we started summer, summer, or the issue, uh, uh, last summer, and the way we minimize the cost. That, uh, concludes that section. We now need to move on to, uh, page N thirty-nine. And, uh, the general fund for public libraries is on page, uh, G twenty-four. As I mentioned on the, uh, on the budget message, last year, we had budgeted thirty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars for retirement purposes, seven, uh, pay for a long-term employee. We're going to spend about thirty-nine thousand, but that thirty-nine thousand is not needed if it's appropriated in the fall thirteen year, and it provides us with the ability to, uh, reduce, uh, reduce the, uh, cost of the program. The revenues from the, uh, from the library system are up a thousand dollars. So what, uh, they had, uh, the current year, uh, so overall, the property tax, uh, need is down only to a thousand six hundred and twenty dollars, uh, once we net out that thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, uh, base cost of, yes, a thousand. My concern and Alan's concern is, uh, at this point, uh, libraries have a requirement for maintenance of effort. That maintenance of effort, uh, suggests that, uh, if we're reducing the cost of the library, we could move state aid. This is still, uh, an accomplishment we're going to have to spend some time with, uh, and determine from a state perspective whether or not the base, uh, amount for the eleven-twelve year with the pension payout, uh, be accounted for separately. If not, uh, surely you'd want to spend more on your books. We're not sure that Alan will agree with that. I think that, uh, surely that's provide the, uh, uh, a good narrative, uh, as far as the library's planning for thirteen goals, and, uh, certain sheets here, we will have a lot of the questions as well, but, but again, the library at this point is down twenty-six thousand two hundred and sixty dollars, uh, as far as the expenditure program is concerned. And I remind you that the state grants are worth about a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. So we've got to be concerned on how we can, uh, if there's a back, the, uh, we had to write a letter during the current year, it's funny, we had, uh, mainly some applications concerned. There may be legislation introduced this year because, uh, there's some concern on how we're supposed budgets are supposed to, how are we supposed to maintain in those communities that have serious pension problems, four percent levy increases, yet at the same time, they can't control the cost as far as what the cost of libraries are. So this is still, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, I'm concerned that we'll have to, uh, we will, we will hold.
Yeah, uh, there was, we did have a request, was it the ten-eleven year?
We're looking for, um, for this year.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
A question over two years ago.
Right, okay. And as long as we could document that we were maintaining the same level of service, which I think is the case here, correct? It's just a shift, and the fact that the benefits are now, um, there's no full-time benefits, it's part-time position, so that's part of the, you know, in addition to the twenty-six thousand dollars, there's also a reduction in fringe benefits. So we have to account for that, and, uh, in, in looking at this, that, you know, we'll either have to do the same type of letter or come up with a different way to fund the retirement that's scheduled for the eleven-twelve year. That's, you know, we're fortunate that we have the compensated absence fund that we could draw on potentially, um, if it is something that the state rejects, um- could draw on potentially if it is something that the state rejects based on the reduction in the expenditures.
Could I just ask a question? Well, go ahead, Carol, did you have a question?
Yeah.
And then Jim, I'll wait.
I just wanted to know, you have a predicted total program attendance going down to 12,000. Is that because you're closed on Sundays?
No, no, I think it's just-
Hey Carol, can you use the mic for a second?
Is it on? No, it's just attendance is down. People are so busy here in South Kingstown. There are so many things to do that, there's a lot of, and one of the factors also was the all-day kindergarten affected some of our children's programs.
And the other thing, Shirley, it says information requests received.
Uh huh.
You go from the actual of 26,664 down to the predicted of 26,000 and then it says the goal is 2,600, but maybe you missed-
I think it must be a typo. 26,000 would be the goal.
Okay, that would make sense.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's missing a zero that I missed.
On page N40. No, that, that makes more sense.
Yeah.
But last year, you had 12,725 program attend, with the program attendance, so you do think it's gonna, it's going in that direction.
I think so. I think so.
Thank you.
Although, you know, we just picked up another book discussion group at Peacedale for a second group. We've got 10 now book discussion groups going between the three libraries, so you never know. You never know, but, but we have had an impact in children's programs and all-day kindergarten did affect us.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Jim?
All set.
All set. Carol asked a question. I just have a question. How do we purchase like the electronic books? Is it for a year or is it through the CLAN system?
We do, we do it through Ocean State Libraries.
Okay.
So we don't select any ourselves. We, our friends' groups have contributed to the overall fund, which is a statewide fund, but we have, we leave the selection to a small group. There's a small group of collection development librarians in the system who do that. Now, in the current year, Ocean State Libraries has $50,000 from the Champlin Foundation to purchase eBooks. And next year, we're going to ask the Champlin Foundation for $300,000 to purchase eBooks for everybody because they're interested in this area, so we're going to encourage them.
And when those eBooks are purchased, is it for a lifetime that they purchase them or a specific amount of time? You know, one year, two years?
It depends on the publisher. Some of them are lifetime and some are just for so many circulations, like the, from Hopper Collins, which are 26 circulations before they stop.
Right.
It is a, excuse me, it is a growth area. Where our circulation has increased about 50% over last year in the eBook category and I think the Kindle has really had an impact.
And the iPad 3 is coming out too, which has the same capability. And do we have somewhere in a newsletter how people can access those eBooks, what the process is?
We do. We have a monthly newsletter and that information is in, was in the last month, I think.
Right.
We also have posters up at the library and we have information on our website. And on the website, there's, you can click on, you can, you can click on a link and get an explanation on how to load it on your particular device.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Great, thank you.
That concludes the nice presentation. Modernize, we will deal with leisure services and public services. So, the recreation, the Peacedale offices, field, senior services and public parks administration.
Do we have any last-minute questions here? Any questions from the audience? Just another phenomenal presentation and we thank all of you for your tireless efforts putting this together. So, much appreciated. Meeting adjourned.